I'd like to call to order the July 25th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dallo.
Here.
Mr. DeSico.
Here.
Ms. Cassali.
Here.
Mr. Bernardi.
Here.
Mr. Oppone.
Here.
Mr. Turner, absent. Mr. Vier.
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great. The next item is approved of the agenda. I'm going to note that request, rezoning petition, request number 06-16, Mike Magnoli, has been withdrawn per the request of the petitioner. So with that one adjustment, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move. Support.
By DeSico, support by Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is approval of the minutes from the June 27th meeting.
So move.
So forward.
By DeSico, support by Dallo. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first item is correspondence from Perry DiMaggio regarding property at the southeast corner of Market Street and Lakeside Boulevard. Mr. Nguyen.
Chairman, I had an opportunity to meet with this interested property owner about developing a small hotel at this site, which is at the southeast corner of Market Street and Lakeside Boulevard. The site is zone C5. The C5 is a mixed-use district, and we allow a range of uses, including residential, commercial, office, and institutional. It doesn't specifically mention hotel. So I do think it's similar enough to those other uses, particularly multiple-family, that that would be allowable use. Since this is a PUD district, you have the flexibility of accepting deviations from the standards of the ordinance. I don't think this is a major deviation. My conclusion is reasonable to consider hotels as permitted use. I wanted to raise that question, too, before the applicant went through the expense of preparing a site plan, and didn't want to find that out after the fact that we had that conclusion. Again, because it's a PUD, there is some flexibility in the ordinance to modify those standards.
Thank you. The only, I'd have no issue with that interpretation. The only issue I would request that gets communicated to the potential petitioner is that, given this development, plus the development across the street with the high-rise senior, and then the two developments on the other side of Lakeside Boulevard, it's really going to put pressure on that traffic intersection. And I would be hard pressed to approve anything that didn't have, that addressed that.
Okay. I will communicate that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't think it was me, but I take the bullet. That's it. I'll take the bullet.
Okay, so are there any questions on what's being requested?
I just have a quick question. And, Mr. Nguyen, I'm not sure if you know this as of yet. How many stories would this be?
He didn't specify.
I mean, my only objection is this. Well, there'd be a couple, but that, my big one would be, not only the traffic, but as far as how many stories high in comparison to the seniors that it's?
That was six.
Or the senior?
Yeah.
Okay. I wouldn't want it any taller than that?
I would agree. That makes sense.
Because I think that that would be out of place?
You said 75 to 100 rooms?
I think something like that.
Yeah, so that would be...
The one I saw, he had a rendering that was generic. I don't think it was more than three stories, but I'll share that with him as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So no Trump Tower for Shelby?
[laughing].
All right, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cassali.
I move to conclude that a hotel could be allowed as permitted use in the C5 zoning district.
Support.
Okay, moved by Cassali, support by DeSico. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, next item is site plan number 16-23, Dino Juncivick, Utica Van Dyke towing.
Hello, Bill Mosher with Apex Engineering Group on behalf of the petitioner. Everybody's aware of this site. We finally got a site plan back to you to end the temporary uses that we've asked for for a number of years. It's...
So what are your questions? Because probably not everyone...
Oh, site plan approval, excuse me, for a 2,000-square-foot building located on the site. So we'll be able to remove the temporary trailer. And the applicant has also purchased the adjoining parcel to the east. And we were trying to bring in both sites together, but then there was a tenant that backed out of the deal. So we just brought in this site, just to clean that up from this perspective. The township's been very patient, and we'd just like to proceed with building the building as soon as possible.
Okay. Mr. Nguyen?
Mr. Chairman, review the site plan. I'll let him comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may know, the outdoor storage for this site has already been approved. This is a simple 2,000-square-foot building. Our comments are minimal. Two parcel IDs to essentially flanking the site were mislabeled, and increasing handicap parking.
Okay. Anyone from the board have any questions? Hearing none.
I do. I have a quick question, sorry. And you probably, you might have already addressed this before, Mr. Mosher. As far as the time limit on the vehicles staying on the property, is there a time limit?
I don't know, actually.
There was established as part of the special land use, but I don't recall what it was. But I can tell you, we haven't had any enforcement issues with this site that deal with the storage.
Okay.
To my recollection.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Vier.
You ready for a motion?
I am.
I move to approve the site plan application number 16-23, Dino Juncivick, for a building located on the north side of 22 Mile Road between Ryan and Shelby Road, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Vier, support by DeSico. Any questions on the motion? Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, next item is site plan number 16-24, special land use number seven, Lindsay Cosner with Consumers Energy. Seeing this is a public hearing, I'll ask the secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant, Lindsay Cosner, Consumers Energy, One Energy Plaza, Jackson, Michigan, 49201. Proposed use, office trailer with outdoor storage. Location, 3423 Auburn Road, north side of Auburn Road, west of Ryan. Site plan number 16-24, SLU-7. Sidwell number 23-07-30-451-006, and 23-07-30-476-002. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, July 25th, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published on July 10th, 2016. There were 19 property owners, and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on July 8th, 2016.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dennewith, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes.
Okay. And can you explain the uses under the present zoning, and if the special land use request is appropriate to this district?
Yes, thank you. The present zoning is LM Light Manufacturing. This is set forth in the Shelby Township ordinances under Section 11.20 pursuant to Section 13.01. This does require, or especially, the Planning Commission would have to find affirmatively under several factors for a special land use. And pursuant to Section 13.36.2B, .4, .C of the zoning ordinances, this would be an appropriate use, but a variance may be required from the ZBA unless other measures can be provided to prevent materials from blowing across the, to the adjacent property. However, outdoor storage isn't allowed, isn't allowed use in the LM district as a special land use as set forth under Section 11.20.2B, .3, and as referenced in Section 13.36 of the ordinances.
Okay, thank you. The format, oh, Madam Secretary, did you receive any correspondence on this?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. The format for the special, the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner will state their, what they're requesting and the reasons for it. We'll then turn it to the commission to ask any questions that they may have. We'll then open it up to the public for any comments or questions, and then I'll bring the petitioner back up for, to answer any questions that were raised at this time. If I get your name and address, please.
Lindsay Cosner, One Energy Plaza, Jackson, Michigan, 49201. Here on behalf of Consumers Energy to request the special land use approval for some temporary storage area. It'd also be like a show-up site. We're going to be enhancing the infrastructure in the area, so this will be our main site where everyone will show up and have meetings, gather in the morning. To do that, we'd like to lease it for three years, and then the lease would have two possible extensions of a year each, so a possible total of five years with the property.
Can I maybe explain what you, would you plan to do, to sort of improve the site, or prepare for your use?
Oh, sure. So there'd be two trailers that would be side by side, so it pretty much ends up looking like one big trailer. And then there's a site plan behind you, and also on here, it's a little bit hard to see. There will be a berm in front of everything on Auburn Road, so that should block and provide plenty of landscaping, so no one would be able to see anything from the road. There'll be a couple of storage areas, some porta-potties, and a dumpster back there, also some aggregate storage. That's pretty much it.
And what will you be storing?
Pipes and materials.
Okay. No trailers, or trucks, or...
There will be equipment parking. It's going to be in the rear of the property.
Okay. All right. To the board.
Chairman, can I have some other comments, just to kind of fill in the, there's a few blank spots on this one?
Sure.
We had, a year and a half ago, we received an application for special land use approval for a truck, truck, trucking business. Nice building on Auburn Road, and truck storage in the back. And they needed the, so we accepted that application. They never came to the Planning Commission. In the meantime, they went to the Board of Appeals and asked for temporary use permit to store the trucks while they're getting ready to submit the site plan. I think the Board of Appeals granted them a year, and that year expired, and the trucks were still there. They withdrew their application for the permanent building, and we spent six months trying to get the rest of their trucks out of there, which we successfully did. When this request came in from Consumers, I talked to Mr. Moffett and Mr. Rice, chairman of the ZBA, and it sounded more like a temporary use, but that length of time was kind of excessive. So we thought perhaps the special land use process would be the best. You can still limit the timeframe. I think it's really an interim use of the site. This isn't a permanent use.
Correct.
But it's certainly a cleaner, neater operation than we had before. I'm comfortable that, we know the applicant would monitor and keep it clean and neat. And then, you know, we asked to do that berm on the road, get rid of that one driveway, so it has a little nicer appearance. So I think on an interim basis, you know, this is a very reasonable request, and one we should take seriously. The site plan comments are relatively minor. The loose materials, I think, really applies more to sand and, like, debris that would be blown from the site. If it's aggregate, it's not going to blow. I don't think that's too much of an issue on the site. I would note that the other site next to it is zone R10. You may recall that was approved for a PUD many years ago, but they've never developed it. I think it's not practical to impose a screening standard for them against that other use, which, you know, if this, if it ever develops, then we'd impose that standard. But it seems kind of pointless, and not a lot of common sense, to make them screen something that's a similar use to theirs. So I didn't mean to jump over that, but I just think I wanted to add to that background, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nguyen.
Mr. Nguyen, when you talk temporary, you talk five years as temporary?
That's what they're asking for, yes.
Are we doing anything with such putting up, this applicant brings in something to go on Auburn Road, which we've spoken so many times and offered to all those people in that area, that we were going to do something about doing something better for that part of the township? You speak to it being better than what was there. But is this really better for that part of the township? I submit that it is not, and I will never vote for it in its present form. We need to do something to the people who live in that area. We keep making promises, we do nothing, and then we bring this application to put it in these people's backyard. And I think it's time we stop.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we are doing some other things on Auburn Road and a bigger picture. One is, we're getting, we're spending block grant money to do some landscaping on Auburn Road for about a quarter mile from Hickson West to DeQuender, or that's our community development block grant money. We're getting those bids back, hopefully tomorrow, so that can be done. There's a couple of vacant buildings. One, we've targeted for blight removal. That's the old Rite Aid, proposed Rite Aid site at the corner of Auburn and DeQuender. And there's the vacant bank building. We brought that back for site plan to be reoccupied. So I agree with Mr. Vier. There's a lot on Auburn Road that needs to be done, but we're trying to do it one parcel at a time. We're working with HNS Auto on perhaps a new owner to clean that site up. This isn't the perfect use, but I think it's at least a step in the right direction. It would keep it from becoming a blighted site, which it's become right now. So I appreciate the bigger concern Mr. Vier's raising. It's a valid one, and I think we're trying to address that one step at a time.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vier.
I don't believe this application addresses what I spoke to. Do you have any idea of the height of the berm you intend to put there?
I believe it is listed on the site plan.
Why don't you come back to the mic and answer the...
About three feet.
About what?
Three feet.
Three feet.
Mm-hmm. With trees that are staggered also, so you'll have pine trees. They'll be blocking that area.
And there will be trucks coming in and out, hauling whatever you have stored in there?
Mm-hmm.
And we just spent hundreds of thousands of dollars resurfacing Auburn Road, and it's going, it's breaking up even now. I can't support something like this, but we'll see how it goes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vier. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I do have a question for the petitioner. When you say modular, you refer to it as modular buildings or trailers, what exactly, you know, what year? Are we talking dilapidated? Are we talking?
No.
New? I mean, I mean, there's a wide range here.
Right. Typically, they are new. I don't know specifically on this one, but they're definitely not dilapidated.
I, too, share the same concerns that Mr. Vier does. You know, I thought our whole intent was to kind of clean up that area, and I just, you know, I know that you had mentioned, Mr. Nguyen had mentioned, the Rite Aid and the bank building as far as, but those are at least buildings, even though they are not occupied right now. But they're nicer-looking buildings. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, one other thing.
Okay.
Putting a trailer on that site for five years is just unconscionable, in my view. Let them take it west of DeQuender, and take it to a planning commission in Oakland County, and see how far they would get with a submission of this nature. Just a thought, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on the special land use request. You can sit down right now. At this time, anyone from the audience is free to come, ask any questions, offer a comment or opinion for us to consider. Go on once, go on twice. Okay, thank you. Anything additional, Mr. Nguyen?
Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Okay, thank you. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval. We may disapprove, or table to evaluate the information further.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of special land use application 16-24, to permit the use of this site for a storage and meeting location for the following reasons. Number one, the use of this site is consistent with the surrounding land pattern on the section of Auburn Road, which is predominantly industrial in nature, including outdoor storage. Number two, the berm on the front of the property will buffer the outdoor storage from nearby development. Number three, the revised site plan must be provided, addressing the comments of the planning department, township engineer, and building director. Number four, a revised site plan will be required if the abutting property is developed for residential purposes within the five years. And number five, the approval period for this special land use is limited to five years.
Support.
Okay, moved by DeSico, support by Dallo. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
No.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Vier?
No.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, next item is site plan number 16-...
We're signed.
Oh, excuse me. Could you sign in, please?
No.
Actually, that motion carried five to three. I'm a site plan number 16-25, Bill Luther of All American Pet Resorts.
I can, I can follow up with this one if you want.
I'm going to move that area for you.
We, we received this plan for the conversion of a vacant industrial building for an all-purpose dog, dog care grooming and boarding facility. The site is zone light manufacturing. We've allowed that similar use in other, in other locations in the township. The site plan review is limited to the exterior improvements. The, you can see the picture of the building as it appears now, and then the elevations of what they're proposing. Oftentimes, we'll do these administratively when they're minor, but given the scale of this building, we felt that was inappropriate. We wanted to share with the planning commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is the petitioner here?
Good evening, planning commission members. My name's Danny Planis. I've been asked to speak for Mr. Luther. He's not available tonight. However, Amanda and Brianna Luther are here to answer any questions you have about the project. We're the design builders. We've done a couple of these dog care facilities before. They're fairly straightforward, mostly interior work. There are some exterior improvements on the building, which are self-explanatory, I believe they are. And I think we're, we're in compliance with, with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, but we're here at your, your questioning.
Okay, to the board. Are there any questions?
I just have a question for you, Mr. petitioner. As far as the, do you have other locations that you currently operate?
This is actually a franchise. We are the fifth one...
Can I get you to talk into the mic, please?
We're a franchise. We're the fifth in the state of Michigan. There's locations in Roseville, Canton, Royal Oak, as well as Rochester Hills. We would be the first in Shelby Township. So they're all operated separately.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Mr. Nguyen, you have any other thoughts?
No, I just think this is a nice reuse of that building, and a nice, the exterior design is pretty, pretty nice. More than pretty nice, it's very nice.
Is there a motion?
Yep. Go ahead.
Chairman, I'd like to approve the amended site plan for the All American Pet Resort, site plan number 16-25, as submitted.
Support.
I'm going to, I'm going to give it to Commissioner Moore for enthusiasm, if nothing else. All right, any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Mr. Vier?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Good luck, and welcome to Shelby.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Nguyen.
A few items. The first is the standard administrative report. In June, we had 22 signed applications and one temporary use application. Also, there's a brief memo in the file about the Bel Castro site plan. That's at a restaurant and retail building on Van Dyke, east side, west side of Van Dyke, north of 21, 22 Mile Road. The site plan has already been approved. They met all the requirements. After that, they made an application to assessing for a property division. And the division, the boundary lines are somewhat gerrymandered around in an awkward sort of way to meet their financing requirements. They do have the, and the ordinance gives some flexibility to reduce a lot width or a lot area, as long as there's reciprocal agreements in place. The only issue that they didn't meet was, now that the one property line kind of goes near a building, they wouldn't meet technically the rear lot, rear lot line, even though it's not any different from what you approved. So the PUD gives us some flexibility, and given the timing of this, I approved it administratively, but I wanted to share that with you. I talked to Mr. Moffett about it. I think the concern was reciprocal agreements. The engineers required it as part of the engineering review, so we will get that. The concern would be, let's say the property is split up now, it's on one ownership, but if the two owners take over and one's fighting with the other regarding parking, they have to share the parking universally, and they will do that. So in some cases, it's more of a housekeeping item more than anything, but I, I felt it was necessary out of respect for the commission to share what we've done. Just receive and file, I think. And the last one...
Did anyone explain the logic of it?
Yeah, we had to explain the logic to the applicant. He didn't...
Well, no, no, but I mean, why, why would the, why would the lender?
I, I don't know. I've asked that question. I've just, so the lender demanded it this way somehow. I don't, as a condition of the financing. The problem was, it happened, you know, I didn't hear about it until it was like, now we need to have this done right now. And it was like, I didn't want to see this project go south for something that was kind of a technical reason. But I felt a little, I think we're all a little frustrated at staff level that we're scrambling to deal with something that if it could have been handled ahead of time.
Yeah.
You, you see some, from some of the memos we send your emails, some of the follow-up that we do for site plans, where things could have been done a little differently.
Okay. Do we have a motion to, or receive and file this?
Motion to receive and file.
Your support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One last item. This, it's this little letter from Ayale Construction Company. This particular construction, he's an underground contractor, and he's looking at a site on Auburn Road, right where Auburn and Mound Road sort of intersect. It's on that kind of north side of the road. He's, he's a contractor. Normally, we expect contractors to be in LM, but he says, all I want is a building for his office and for his repair of his vehicles. There's little, if no, outdoor storage in the back. He's just going to have an area to park a truck if it comes in for storage, for maintenance. And this is one of those hard sites to develop, and my feeling is, the C2 would be okay if he's just having his office there in a repair, because we allow auto repair, truck repair, in that C2 zoning anyway. It, you know, this is an area of Auburn Road. We're trying to, you know, get some new life and new development. And the site plan I saw looked pretty sharp, so I think it would be a use that I would entertain seeing a site plan for. But I wanted to share that there before we went to the effort to do that. So I just kind of, I see heads nodding. Does that mean it's...
Say, any objections?
Thank you. Okay, I'll follow up and let him know. We spent quite a bit, we've had quite a few people looking at these sites. The, the broker has been posting it as industrial. It's not, so people come to the counter thinking it's light industrial, and they leave oftentimes feeling fairly irritated with us. And we tell them what they want to do, they can't do. And, you know, it's like, you know, so we finally talked to the realtor and said, you need to understand what this is on. If you want to...
Very good. Business from the floor, Mr. Dress. Okay, it was postponed by the, the applicant. Sent a notice at the last minute saying that they wanted it pulled from the agenda. We did make announcement before, and then we moved it from the agenda, so.
Did you get?
No.
No, we don't. They didn't let us know on Friday. We'll, when it comes back, you'll get another postcard in the mail. I apologize for the inconvenience.
We'll tell you what.
Why don't you come in, you can come stop at the counter anytime. I'd be happy to, we don't have many more than just what they wanted to do, and I'd be happy to share that with you.
I just wanted to see if it was going to connect to Pine or the State.
We don't, I don't know, we haven't seen a plan. But the answer's probably they want to do that, probably, so.
Will we get a notice?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Will it be in advance, or will it be like the day before, or?
We would treat this as a new application, and we'd start all over again and give you the notice in the proper required timeframe, which is at least 15 days. Usually, it's more than that, right, Julie?
And it'll be, and it'll be published as well.
Yeah. Well, you'll get it, if you got one already, you'll get another one. Sorry for making you come out.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we adjourn.